Read it.
Call the order, verification meeting notice.
Posted on the web.
Okay, two then roll call.
Mrs. Blazinski.
Here.
Mr. Brisboy.
Here.
Mrs. Ferriens.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Manning.
Here.
Mrs. Peterson.
Here.
Mrs. Rowe.
Three then approval of the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Peterson and second by Mr. Brisboy to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Four then, board organization and election of officers. This is when we have to have, when we close, we have to have three, right? Well, are there any other nominations? You're right with three.
Can I believe I handled this?
Yes.
For the clerk. First item under, item four point one will have the election of president. I will open the floor for nominations.
I'll nominate Steve Lewis.
I'll second.
Steve Lewis has been nominated and seconded. Are there any other nominations?
Feel free to.
Are there any other nominations? And are there any other nominations? Hearing no other nominations, I will move to, I will close the nominations and I move to cast unanimous ballot for Steve Lewis as president.
Do you need a second?
I do need a second.
Yes, I'll second that then.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations.
Congratulations, Steve.
That's fine. Be noted to Mr. Lewis, abstaining from voting. Vote for himself. Do you wish to take over?
You can run him off.
Okay.
You're doing such a great job.
Item four point two, election of vice president, and I open the floor for any nominations.
I'd like to nominate Linda Peterson.
First and seconded for the nomination of Linda Peterson. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? I move to close the nominations for vice president and cast unanimous vote for Linda Peterson.
I'll second.
Second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, Linda as vice president. Item four point three, election of treasurer. I will open the floor for nominations.
I'll nominate Susan Blazinski.
Susan Blazinski, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Randy Manning. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I will cast unanimous ballot for treasurer for Susan Blazinski. Is there a second? Second by Randy Manning. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, Susan as treasurer. I will now turn this over to see our election of clerk. No, I will handle the final four point four, election of clerk. Are there any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Ron Brisboy.
Ron has been nominated, speaking in the third person. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Peterson. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations, please?
I will move to cast unanimous ballot for Ron Brisboy.
Second by Mr. Manning, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ron, myself, and I are the clerk.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Manning, seconded, right?
Yes, he did. Item four point five, election of WASB representative. Are there any nominations?
I would nominate Kelly Ferriens.
Kelly Ferriens, is there a second? Second by Mr. Manning. Are there any other nominations? No, this is appointment. No of this in this election, so we'll continue. Is there any other nominations? Is there any other nominations? I read, sorry. Not here any other. I will move to close nominations and cast unanimous ballot for Kelly Ferriens as the WASB representative. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
You need a second. I'll do that for you.
Second, thank you. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Kelly. Election of a CISA III representative.
Guess who's getting it?
I'm not here.
I would move to have Randy Manning be the CISA III rep. Is there a second? Second by Kelly Ferriens. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations?
Oh, Mr. Brisboy, you made that motion, didn't you?
What's that?
You made that motion, didn't you?
I will make that motion, I will ca-
No.
Yeah, he did. The first one, he did. Yes, he did.
I will cast unanimous ballot to close nominations for the CISA III rep and cast unanimous ballot for Randy Manning. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Steve Lewis, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Four point seven, an appointment of curriculum inspection committee, you should take over.
Yep, okay. Back to me. So, curriculum committee, who is currently on that now and do you want to be on it again?
Yes, I am.
The three of you? Okay, so.
Unless somebody else wants.
So Linda Peterson, Ron Brisboy, and Kelly Ferriens will be on the curriculum? Okay. Everybody's good with that? We don't, we don't need to bill vote because we're just appointed.
Right.
I appoint you, appoint you, and appoint you. Is that how it is?
Yep, that's it.
Right, right.
I appointed, right? Okay, four point eight, policy committee, who is currently on that?
And Summer and Mrs. Rowe.
And didn't we say we wanted to go to three on all committees now in case, just for?
That would be awesome.
We can have, yes, people's, can't make things, we at least gotta have a couple. So, so Summer. Susan.
Yes.
And anybody else want to, okay, Kelly, on the policy.
Yay, welcome to policy, Kelly.
Okay, so I appoint Summer Rowe, Susan Blazinski, and Kelly Ferriens to the policy committee. And then the finance and personnel committee, which meets before every meeting, at least. We haven't had any other special ones, but not before every meeting. Currently, it is Linda, Susan, and I. Is anybody dying to get on that one?
I don't think I have a choice anyway, do I?
Yeah, Susan and I, usually.
And I have to be.
And I, I, you're good, I'll at least stay on.
Okay.
But if somebody else wants to. You can point at yourself.
Julie's already appointing. She's typing it out before you even get to it.
Okay. I, I don't think the president has to be appointed, I think he's just on that and the clerk's just on that. So, the, I appoint Linda, would also be on the finance and personnel committee with Susan and myself.
Okay.
Right?
Yes.
Four and a, four ten then, appointment of buildings and grounds committee, which is currently Randy, Ron, and myself. Anybody else? No, you guys?
I'm good with that.
Okay, I appoint Ron and Randy and myself to the buildings and grounds committee. And that makes three on every committee then.
You know what we don't have on here is the new committee.
Expansion?
Expansion committee.
Do you want to put that on next?
No, because I don't think that's a permanent committee.
Okay.
It's an ad hoc.
It's an ad hoc.
So it goes away when it's done.
Yep. So, anything else? We're good on that? Okay, if not, we'll move on to five then approval of the minutes of the April thirteenth, 2020 meeting.
I didn't say anything. I would make that motion.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Peterson, second by Mrs. Blazinski to approve the minutes of the April thirteenth, 2020 meeting as presented. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Unopposed? Okay, then six, citizens forum, any citizens wishing to speak? Out there in the crowd, anyone?
Pretty good.
Okay, seeing none. We'll move into seven, then committee reports minutes. Seven one, finance and personnel from earlier this evening.
So, a couple checks of note, five zero two five seven, Amazon Capital Services for nineteen hundred and seven dollars and seventy nine cents for various items. Five oh two nine zero, CDW Government for eight thousand one hundred forty eight dollars and twenty seven cents. Part of that was the outside wifi points that we had, that we had installed. And then we had five zero three hundred to precision controls for three thousand one hundred seventy one dollars and sixty cents. There was the elementary unit events we talked about, boys locker room, roof AC coils and water pumps, basically spring maintenance stuff. Then we talked about the extracurricular pay for coaches and assistant coaches. That was a pretty, how was that described, a robust discussion, Julie?
Robust discussion we had.
So, we'll, we're revisiting a few numbers and we'll bring that back another time. And we talked about extended contracts for, you know, since we're not having summers and like it usually is. We have Mr. Favreau and Ms. Bevan basically have their normal thing they're gonna do, they still have their stuff. And then we have Mrs. Ferriens wants to push her band back to July, especially if they're going to Disney because they haven't practiced in a while. And we talked about bus drivers a little bit.
And that comes up later.
Okay, and that's it.
Any questions or comments for the finance and personnel committee? Seeing none, we'll move on to seven two, policy from May sixth.
So, the policy committee talked about our Chromebook policy, which we have talked over a couple times. The technology committee, it felt that it was a little too fun and gamesy, so we made it very simple and direct. We'll bring that to you guys for approval over the summer. We did talk about medication and all of our policies around that, and we're not done with those, those are still a work in progress. We talked about student and teacher days. Again, nothing was done, just discussion. We have a safety procedures that we discussed and we'll bring that to you guys in a couple of weeks. Adding a few things to the teacher handbook with timing of the teachers' days. Again, over the summer, we'll bring it to you. We tabled our library policy because our librarian wants to present them to herself and she was, unfortunately, she had class. So we reviewed one oh one, general organization, two oh two point oh one, district administrator job position, two oh two oh four, annual performance disclosure report, and the supervision and evaluation review. So those are just ones that we reviewed, just fine and dandy. And then eventually we'll be bringing you guys the newly employed teacher orientation. We discuss and we'll present that one to you over the summer also. We are gonna be, we did talk about creating a new job, job, a new position, job description, and, and items that came up about what we need in the office to help us get everything done. And our next meeting is June third.
Any questions, comments for policy? Seeing none then, seven three, buildings and grounds from May sixth.
We've met and had an update of the sound system. I understand and hopefully the equipment is being, or has been ordered. So, should hopefully be delivered to the consultant or the person we're having install the system and, basically design the system. We reviewed the capital improvement plan for 2020. We, later we toured the building and grounds, but we discussed the filling of the baseball field with dirt from the parking lot, raising the spigots and running the grades out here, and then how much Dan Clery and the baseball boosters are doing. We talked about adding technology funding that was left over, approximately fifty three thousand. We discussed the Laval telephone grant being approved from Highway fourteen up to County Highway K. And it'll give us more capacity. I have turned over the communication between the telecom and the school to Adam Hess. Adam requested to be there and I was absolutely, you're the IT man, go ahead and talk. Talk whatever you guys talk about. And we discussed the purchasing of a new bus, Julie, we got a quote. We had a good discussion on the boiler, the antifreeze and the dampers and the costs. Frank Wasslech was here and talked to us about it and gave us a quote in his input discussion on the winch and the backboards. Frank's getting a few quotes, that could be a safety hazard. And the system, new system to prevent the cables from being wound the wrong direction, which has happened and causes sometimes breakage. Discussing on a sewer snake for plumbing to deal with the challenges that we've had there. There's also a great person coming in from, I think, Kramer's to possibly review it. We talked about purchasing a lift or renting a lift or servicing a lift to clean the building. However, Simpson's tractor loaned it to us and they were out power washing, so thank you to Simpson's for that. And then we went around and toured the outside, looking at, well, a lot of the hardware that's been added, but also how well the power washing's been working as they cleaned off the building. And our next meeting is June third at six thirty.
Any questions or comments for buildings and grounds?
Building really looks nice.
It does.
It does.
Awesome job. And then they're, they're putting a compound on there to kill the mold so that way it won't come back, so should be, yeah. The original bid for that was twenty five thousand dollars to do that. And so I think, you know, with them donating the lift, I think we had like eight hundred and fifty dollars for the, for the spray to treat it so it won't come back right away.
And we did buy a power washer.
Yep, and, yeah. And so, it looks, if you haven't seen it, this backside is fantastic. It's better than what I even hoped it was gonna be.
Awesome.
Any other? Okay, we'll move on to eight then reports. Eight one, district administrators' reports.
I put a whole bunch of stuff about COVID and, and what we're, you know, what we're thinking as a school district. Because of the Federal Cares Act, we're not, we don't have to do the standardized testing, then we can't have a report card. And so lots of things are on pause for like the next two years. And Medicaid did change because of, we can now do audio only speech, which is kind of nice because I know Mrs. doesn't do speech over the phone all the day, all day. I already mentioned Mrs. Ferriens has expressed interest in band lessons if they're gonna be able to go to Florida over the summer. So, we talked a lot about the three different kinds of grants as, at the, sorry, at the superintendent level. I've been in way too many webinars, I'm sure most of you are, cream it. Now we do is talk via Zoom. But there are options out there, but we still, I mean, I don't even know what the options are, are all out there yet. But we will be, be jumping on it. Richland District has voted to continue their food service through the end of the month. And since there are vendors, I assumed, but I haven't quite gotten a yes from them yet. He mentioned it on a morning meeting that I wasn't able to go to, that Adam and I have every morning. And I assumed that they were gonna do it for us also, but I can't really assume that. So it does say that they're gonna do that, but we've been up to two hundred and forty meals a day. That is amazing for us. Somebody had gotten money for donating milk and cheese curds, so our, our families are getting even a little bit more, which I think is wonderful. And Ms. Shane has got all these ladies out here handing out all the food and they're, they're here every single night handing out food, so I want a big shout out to them. And then we had teacher appreciation week last week, and I don't, did anybody get all the way to the end of my report to read? So, I did a, shh, don't tell anybody, for thank you notes for our teachers. And I got thank you notes from parents and, and parents of students that go here that they want to specifically thank the parent or the teacher. I got, I got, I got sixteen pages of thank you notes. I was overwhelmed. But if you get a chance to kind of in reverse alphabetical order and thank you for this, thank you for that. And it just, it gave me goosebumps when I got to send it out to everybody. So, teachers, one of them, I mean, I almost fall every time I read it. So, our teachers are appreciated and they had fun doing the little activity. We got some five dollar gift cards from Kelly's Coffee, we got some PTSA, PTSO donated some money, and we got some twenty dollar gift cards for Calmors. And then, of course, I get all that wonderful stuff you get at the state convention. And so, everybody got prizes and everybody that wanted to play could, and it was no stress for anybody until they had to make the interpretive dance. And then nobody did that one. So, fun must be had by all.
So I just have a question about, Richland Center really, since we're in that contract, they can't really refuse not to do the lunches, can they?
I don't know.
Well, then they can't expect us to pay for them.
That's true. But.
They didn't do it last summer. No, we're talking until the end.
We're talking till the end of June.
Till the end of the school.
And I, and I did, I, I.
They'll do it till the end of the.
School year.
End of June.
Okay.
So they do their own summer thing and we tried to get in on it last year and they wouldn't do it for us.
But they were gonna do it for us this year, for us this year. That's why we wanted to line our, our lunch, our summer school with their summer school. But now they're, they, their board voted to have it go all the way to the end of June. Because there's federal money for that, so we might as well feed our families.
Sure, absolutely.
And I don't think there, I really don't think that there's gonna be a problem with that, but I have not typed this up just assuming, and I shouldn't type things up assuming. I just wanted to let you know I have not gotten an official yes from Richland yet.
So, but we are good until the end of the school year.
Until the end of the school year, we're golden.
Anything else? Any questions, comments? Mrs. Prudential? If not, then eight two, principals report, Ms. Shing's report.
So highlights of the last month, elementary staff are doing a fantastic job reaching out to students and families. We're using ClassDojo as our online platform, each teacher uses it. The special teachers are part of every classroom, schedules have been created so as not to overwhelm families. This platform allows for interaction between teacher and individual parents as well as the whole class. Students can upload pictures, videos, text documents, and teachers can upload videos of teaching or reading aloud. Teachers are making weekly phone or video contact with their students based on what works for students and family. Some teachers are doing small group or whole group class Zoom meetings. On average, elementary teachers are averaging ninety percent weekly success with reaching their kids. So I am really proud of that. And I asked them to give me their numbers and it was over ninety percent. Teachers and myself are helping families as needed by stopping by home pickup. Child, avoiding social distancing, when requested to help with motivation and emotional support. So some of the elementary are, they're not too motivated right now and some of them are really bumming out, especially only children. That's really a struggle for some of our families, so some of the teachers and I have done home visits and that seems to help. Elementary staff have weekly Zoom meetings on Monday. Here we talk about challenges, successes, plans going forward, how to meet family student needs. All staff have voluntarily participated and their dedication to helping all get through this is. Two prospective long-term subs for kindergarten and first grader interviewed last week and my recommendation is on for later in the meeting. Pickup is going well, Annette, Diane, Marla, and Marge prepare the sacks of breakfast lunch in the morning. Annette, Julie Thompson, Kate Powell, and Pam Moser work from four to six for pickup of the meals. This week we are serving over two hundred meals per day to Ithaca families. We continue, continue to encourage all to participate. So if you know somebody that isn't participating, please, you know, say they, tell them they should. Curriculum work continues as staff are working to complete the work begun during this year's PLC, professional learning committees. The goal of the curriculum work is for Ithaca students and families to know what Ithaca education looks like. Using data from the state assessment forward, ACT and other assessment tools district uses, staff look at how we do and then determine how to address shortcomings. It's our goal to be a top school in the area. And by openly and critically looking at what we teach, how we teach, and what students learn, our students will be better prepared. Students who leave Ithaca should and will be able to confidently answer their next chapter, whether it's college, military, workforce, or whatever they wish, well prepared. Curriculum is an ongoing process and the staff are doing the hard work to always improve what we do as educators. Curriculum work sessions are established to meet staff needs. We are meeting in very small groups, practicing social distancing, and working together to ensure what we do aligns together. Through CISA III, a three-day webinar was established with Dave Waddy, superintendent of Stanley Boyd, which is another small district, who talked to several of us about implementing PLCs in small schools and not make sense of it in a small district with shared staff and several Ithaca staff participated. That's my report.
Any questions, comments, or Ms. Shing? Okay, if not, go on to eight three then, principals report, Mr. Lechner's report.
When I was thinking about mine, I was obviously kind of in a reflective mood about what would be going on in the last month of school. And as I say, May is the month that students are historically looking forward to the end of the school year. Students would be excited to be going on field trips, class trips, graduation plans would be talked about, and the graduation ceremony, ceremony would be planned down to the last detail. Senior skip would certainly be discussed with the seniors, as I did last year. Spring sports would be in full swing, track would be gearing up for regionals, sectionals, and the return to lacrosse for the state meet. Baseball would be working on timing the way to return to Appleton for the state tournament. And softball would be surprising everyone by being dominated, by being a dominated team, looking for a way to get to Bidman Field in Madison for the state tournament. Teachers would be planning their semester finals and making sure everyone is on track to academically complete the semester. Teachers would be making plans to get some times for themselves and families and so on. This year though, in the fourth quarter, I'm willing to wager that the students would give anything to actually be back in school. That many of our athletes are working out on their own to continue the process of getting better, working on drills that their coaches have shown them. The graduation ceremony is going to be a bit different than students and parents are used to or hope for, but it still will be awesome. That the teachers who are continuing to work extremely hard within these confines would love to upend all their planning that they've had to do on the fly to have the students in the classrooms one last high, especially the seniors. Some facts, that all of our teachers and school-wide staff have continued to do their level best at making sure all students continue to have the opportunity to learn. That the district is doing its best to provide meals to anyone that would like them. That in reality, teachers are spending more time trying to connect with students' parents to develop class assignments that take into consideration the difficulties of all, all families, families are experiencing. That teachers and admin continue to communicate and finding the best ways to reach our students and parents in the hope of making it the best that it can be. In reality, what I've told all the teachers and students that I've talked to is that you're, do the best that you can do in every situation. And I applaud the effort of all involved. As a footnote to that, when we had our, our staff meeting last week, we probably had fifty to sixty, I'd say, some teachers had a little bit higher percentage of the kids involved. But boy, they're working hard. And they gave me names of kids that they couldn't reach, that they didn't return an email or anything else. So, I called about fifteen of the kids, some of them I couldn't reach either. Some of them, their voice messages was full, they won't take any messages. But nobody's letting anybody just fall by the wayside, they're all trying really hard to get ahold of them. And the teachers have really, you know, the first three weeks, we gave them two days to put together three weeks of learning and in paper, take-home stuff. And now they've kind of adapted to each individual class on which kids can do it on, on the Chromebook or which one still needs it. So, they're really getting together some awful good plans. Really, really happy with how hard they're working at it.
Any other questions, comments, Mr. Lechner? Okay, if not, eight four then, business manager report.
My report's pretty small this month, I have been extremely busy though. A lot of it has been grant claims, which take a lot of time because they want documentation. So it's not only your expense reports, but it's fitting it into the goals that were written into it and what line number and anyway, so that's been a lot of it. And even though we're not in school, it is unbelievable the amount of phone calls that come in, you know? And I mean, Julie sat at the desk and Kathleen to help answer phones for me, and that's been a great help. Brooke's back working Monday through Wednesdays now.
And Barb was in, I think, on Thursday.
And Barb has been coming in and answering phones and stuff, so that's helped me a lot. But it, it's just crazy. I mean, today, we got a phone call, is, is the school fair on for this fall? I have absolutely no idea. We don't even know what's happening in June.
Some senior citizen wants to put their plant on.
But, so yeah, it's been very busy, been doing cost projections on, for all the salaries and the wages, moving teachers up on the salary schedule and doing that kind of stuff. Doing, actually started today, because I haven't really had a chance to work on budget even. Starting to put all of that together and what it's gonna look like as far as that, on the wages and Bennys. I can get that pretty well set because of all, because the only changes that we had in Bennys really is the health insurance. Because our dental stay the same, LTD life, that sort of thing. So anyway, doing those projections and I'll have stuff to you at the next meeting for approval. End of year expenses and revenues, working on that as well. I think we're gonna have some money that we can spend. I did get confirmation from DPI finally on that Fund Forty Six and we're all good to go. So the countdown started this year because paperwork wasn't into them and that sort of thing. So that's, that's going, we can put money in the investment account, it's set up, it's there. I, I did put the original amount that. I did put the original amount that you had approved in there. If we put in, if we put it in there, it's got to sit for five years. We might want to look at putting it into a CD, for a five-year CD, because we'll get better interest than where, you know, just sitting where it's at now. So if we look, if we decide to put money in there at the end of the year in June, then we'll talk about that as well.
Anything else? Any other questions or comments for business manager? Okay, if not, then we will move on to nine, old business, nine one, discussion possible action on band trip to Florida.
Okay, well, there's, there's not a lot new. Disney furloughed all of their employees, so right now there's no one there to even talk to. Which actually I think is a good thing because we're still not being pushed to commit, which is okay. Today, they said that they were not taking any kind of reservations until July first. So I think it's good that we were looking a little further into July, that might give us more of a chance. The one thing that I did do is I talked to the travel company because I wanted to make sure that we could get buses if we did go. And she said, let's pencil you in. If you decide to cancel, it's not a problem yet. So she said, we wouldn't be leaving the lot, no, no cost. So I did set a date and I had talked to the kids first. Got an idea of who could go and what was the best time for them. Those dates would be July eighteenth to the twenty-fourth. And also besides that, I asked her, asked the travel lady if we could possibly set the hotel, get that set up just in case, and if we would lose money. And so she asked the hotel and we, I've gone to that hotel for probably the last five trips. So she was very good and she said, let's set your dates and if you cancel, you cancel. No, no penalty for that. So we have those two things set in case we go. If we need to cancel, then we do. But like I said, nothing will be set with Disney and I don't think they'll be back till close to July. So I think we're, we're pretty safe that way. Other than that, I think that's all I have with, in regards to the trip. I don't think there's any, any decision to be made yet. Just wanted to let you know what I, what I did and why I did it.
Any other discussion questions, comments?
Thanks, Mrs. Behrens.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pretty good, we're just holding.
That's all we can do.
It's not even open.
My worry is if we do go ahead and do something, if Florida opens up and we don't, you know, Disney's going to say, we're open. You know what I mean? If we book something and if it comes down to that time, you know what I mean? If Florida's open and Disney's open and we're still at, you know, restricted numbers or whatever, that's my only worry as we approach these things, you know?
Well, I've gotten an update from my mother who lives in Florida and they are opening certain counties already. Some counties are still lockdown tight because the, the number, the incidence rate's huge. But she was excited because as of this week Friday, she can go out.
Mrs. Behrens, what, what are your numbers as far as the kids that, that you've talked to that can, that have said that they can go those dates versus that people haven't got back to or can't go?
I had, I have sixty-eight students that were originally supposed to be going and four have said for sure they couldn't go at that time. They couldn't really go any part of the summer, it sounds like. So I don't think it was just the dates. It was just, I had asked for different dates and it didn't sound like it worked for four of them. There was probably about eight kids I didn't hear back on the second time. Like the first time was this original date and the second time I put out another set of dates. I didn't hear anything on that one, but I had heard on the first one. And as far as I knew, it was only those four that couldn't go.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, all right. Thank you, Mrs. Behrens.
Thank, thank you.
Okay, ten then, new business, ten one, discussion possible action on bills and balances. So we had total receipts of three hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifty-six cents and total disbursements of three hundred and sixty-five thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars and twenty-seven cents.
I'll make a motion to over.
And moved by Mrs. Blazinski to approve the bills and balances as presented. Is your second?
I will second.
Mrs. Peterson, roll call, please.
Mrs. Blazinski, yes, Mr. Brispoy.
Yes.
Mrs. Behrens, Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Manning.
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson.
Motion carries then. Ten two then, discussion on possible action on graduation plans.
So we opened our thing up. We have, I don't know how many of you are right through, have a online stuff or not. So we, we kind of, the graduation committee, the seniors and, and Mr. Lekner and myself, senior advisors of the seniors. So I copied some of the graphs from the survey. Thank you very much. So as you can see, did I get them? Mr. Lekner, you always have a computer. So the senior one, so and I put at the top, currently, we're not allowed to have anything on grounds as of June thirtieth. The Badger Boulds back plan will decide. DHS recommends that we avoid all public and private gatherings, yada, yada, yada. Then the first two are the results of the senior parent and senior survey. So these are the actual seniors. If we have graduation after June thirtieth, not all seniors will be able to participate. Is that okay, yes or no? And the, boy, you cannot tell which colors, but sorry about that.
Okay. Fifty-nine is yes.
Fifty-nine percent is yes.
And then preferred graduation date, June seventh, our planned date, or after, and they all, most of them wanted to go after.
Sixty-one percent.
And I apologize for not printing these out in color ahead of time. And then.
So forty-one percent of them thought that it would not be okay to have it after June thirtieth, but then sixty-one of them, percent of them want to have it after June thirtieth? Am I reading it right?
The first one, are you okay? Are you okay?
Everybody can't participate.
Yeah. They're okay if they can't participate after June thirtieth, forty percent. But then to vote the date, sixty percent said after June thirtieth. I'm confused.
They're okay with some not participating there.
They're okay having it whenever, but if you have it later, they're okay if, if some kids can't participate, if we have it.
Their top choice venue and it kind of a moot point because there's not a lot of choices for us as a school. And then the senior parents, oh, so the, on the Fair Park grandstand, and we don't even know, that's the second one. Sorry, the top one is seventy-four percent is the red one and that's on the football field. And then their second choice would be the Fair Park grandstand and I don't even know if we can use it. So that's what it said there. And then I basically asked the parents the same question. So the top is forty-one percent and that's the red, so no. And then I prefer graduation date from the parents of seniors. And the, is that eighty-one percent, Chris?
It's, it's the same as the other one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And they both have thirty-nine responses with thirty-one seniors.
Well, some parents answered separately, so.
No, but seniors.
The senior one.
Oh.
They're the same, that's what I'm saying.
All right, and then of course, top, top venue. And again, on the football field is the seventy-four percent and then, and the Fair Park grandstand was, was the next one. So then I just put the proposals. The one proposal we brought up was July twelfth, graduation date. So this is to plan after, assuming we can have a big part, have a graduation in July. We would have a, we'd have everybody sit together, all the families sit together, three chairs for family, one graduate and two in the setup area. You'd be, you sit in these three chairs on the football field. They would be pre, pre-positioned and marked. We'd have opening remarks that I just wanted to get some of the stuff in there. The kids can get up and walk over the stage, avoiding other people to get their diploma. Kind of muckler would say goodbye. And then all the speeches would have to be given from the announcing area from the football. So they'd have to go upstairs and talk into the loudspeaker. No, no, there's cons. So no cover, there's not a rain day. We might have to postpone due to continued COVID restrictions. We don't have a great sound system, but if we only talk, we should be okay. We can't do this if and when the band trip is scheduled. If it's later than August fifteenth, not many can attend. And Ms. Durkin will be gone July twenty-fifth. Not all students can attend this. The pros, it does allow the students to be together and give everyone closure, more like a traditional ceremony. And again, there might be more pros and cons, but I just was quick throwing these out for you guys. Another option that we want to talk about is creating a video to air on June seventh at twelve. Ms. Durkin and Mr. Monty, the senior advisors, will have all the kids come in, get in groups of five, because we can do that. They would get dressed up in their caps and gowns. They would get recorded walking up and across the stage. If they don't, if they can't come at that time or they're unable to, we'll just say their name and we'll have a student picture if they can't get an actual video. We were thinking about using the community gym. It already has a stage versus having to set up the stage, but it would very much mimic when you're looking at it, the traditional graduation. They walk up, somebody says their name, they walk up, they go across the stage, look at the camera wave, move their tassel over. Then we would tape all the speeches. So Mr. Lekner would give one, I'd give one, the kids that give them. And we can, the kids can do this right, whether right here wearing a cap and gown, they can do it that day. Or if they wanted to set it up ahead of time, we could do it ahead of time so that they wouldn't have too much worry on the day. Then we would create some sort of a slideshow at the end to add the scholarships and awards. We would add them with the timing. We would want all the kids to be done like Monday and Tuesday of that week before. That would give him a couple of makeups on Wednesday and it would give him Thursday, Friday, Saturday to get everything spliced and put together. And on Sunday, it would air live on YouTube or something. And the kids could actually, we could ask them if they wanted to have a momento, we could make a hard copy of that for them. If they don't want it, that's okay because most, some, we'd probably like one more than they would. But it was the idea that if they want a hard copy, they can have it. And they can go to grandma's or mail it to grandma and grandma can watch them graduate. The cons are it's only on video and it won't allow all the students to get together. We can do this with the COVID measures in place, so that's a pro. And this can happen regardless and it allows all the students to participate. There's no weather worries and can be a live view or tape as a keepsake. Then there's a couple other additions that, again, these are suggestions. If it does rain on July twelfth, we can continue to do that, but have it more of a drive-up. And all the family members stay in the car, the seniors in the front seat. Principal hands out, you know, we just have a drive-through graduation ceremony instead. The, the, maybe the kid, the one student can get out of the car to receive diploma. Maybe we can all park in a parking lot and they can, we can do speeches somehow while everybody sits in their individual cars instead of making it like a parade. We could have the seniors stand in the fire lane, again, six, eight feet apart. Parents and everybody can drive through and then it's kind of like the walkthrough when everybody lines up in the cafeteria, but it's a drive-through instead. And we just would have to keep them going to make sure nobody hit anybody else as they're going through. So again, just some other ideas. It's a no-win situation. We wish we could have normal graduation, but we are unable to.
July twelfth, if, can all the students participate on the July twelfth?
We don't, no. No.
No.
We do have one young man that is going to basic training in the middle of June. But he won't, I mean, we couldn't do it unless they lift the restrictions. We couldn't do it. They're not going to backtrack on school restrictions when school's out for the summer.
Yes, I'm especially interested in hearing Steve and Kelly's opinion since they have seniors.
Yeah.
Erin says to do a virtual and get it done.
So I've talked to a bunch of parents over the last couple of weeks. And overwhelmingly, when you tell them, and talk to the kids too, you talk to them and you say virtual, they're, they just blow up. They're upset, they're mad, they don't want virtual as the only choice. I don't know why we don't do a virtual now. Tape it, they can have it forever, they can play it, we can do whatever. And then plan a in-person one for whenever we can plan it, whoever can make it, makes it. There might be kids that don't want to even show up to the regular one. That's, you know, if they, if they don't want to, they don't have to show up to the video one, they don't have to show up to any of them. But if, if we can have it on the football field at that time, we could have it in the gym and spread out. You know what I mean? And then we wouldn't have to worry about weather. You see what I mean? We could just, you know, between bleachers and chairs and whatever, you could, you know, set it up as close to normal. And if we're limited to people, you know, because it's going to be, they're not going to say you can have, you know, if you can do your social distancing, as long as we can fit that many people in, you know, you could have people in the mezzanine, you could have whatever, do your social distance. But then we eliminate the weather part of it. Because they're not going to say, you know, groups or whatever. If you, if we're still limited in July to groups of fifty or whatever, we can't have it on the football field, we can't have it, we can't have it anywhere. They're not going to say if you spread out far enough, you know? But at least if we have it in the school, then we limit it to the same number of people, we're golden. I think when you talk to them, they want to have some kind of ceremony. You know, you get some of the kids, some of the kids don't care, same thing, mail me my diploma. But the parents are going to be extremely unhappy if we don't. And we may not be able to have in July. We may, you know, we may have to say we're going to plan it in July. If we have to push it back, we push it back, you know, to August or whatever. But plan it in July and if, you know, we have to push it back, we have to push it back and it may never happen. But that's more reason to have the virtual one too. But say with all our enchants, we're going to plan it for July, whatever. And if we have to push it back, we push it back to when we can. We don't know, we don't know. This might be, you know? And I think if it gets pushed back to September or whatever, I think people are going to, you know, say, well, it's getting pretty impossible to get, you know, as the kids run out to wherever.
Yeah.
But I think it's a nice compromise, you know? And we've talked, we've had this conversation. It's, it's not, and that's what I've told the parents, is we're not canceling this because of budget constraints. We're canceling it because we're trying to work with inside the rules we have to. We would like to have a ceremony. I mean, these guys and all the teachers and everybody, you know, these kids have put their time in. It's nice to have everybody to have the closure of having it. Is it going to look exactly like a normal one? Absolutely not. But I think we can say we can try and do our best to have it as close to normal as we can. I love the football field idea because, you know, they're getting, you know, short end of the deal and it's something different. What I don't like about that is if it, if it rains, you know, then we're scrambling and doing whatever. You know, I guess we could say we could plan it for the football field and if the weather looks bad, you know, a couple of days ahead, we're going to have to make that call. And then move it inside, just so that way, if, if, I hate to cancel it just because of weather. Because you know how hard it is to put these things together.
I don't know where we, we got stuck in that football field.
Yeah.
I don't know.
And I think a lot of it.
I don't know.
Well, I, the seniors that I talked to, they, they just had this, that well, that's open air, it'll be okay.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, I mean, that, that was, that was their reasoning.
Yeah, no matter what the distance was, they couldn't get over the fact that we still can't have more than fifty kids on the football field.
Yeah, yeah. And the outside and there aren't the walls that can.
And I think if we tell them, you know, you can have it on the football field if you want, but you could also have it in there if you want, you know? And if they say, well, we're getting kind of shorthanded, we would like to have something, you ever have on the football field? You can probably make that happen. I just hate to see, I could see, go through all this and then it's canceled because sure as heck, you know, it's going to rain that day. And then we're bound, so to me, I don't care which option, but from talking to all the parents, as soon as you tell them, okay, this is, this is what we're up against, this is what we can do. These are the facts. When you say, you know, we have the, the video one, you can do that, whoever participates can participate. Have the regular one, when we can, as close to it as we can. I think everybody says, okay, that's, we can accept that, you know? And another reason to have a video one is, you know, who knows who can participate? But what happens if we have somebody that's in an accident or something? And that's more reason to have this now when we know more people can participate if, you know, something would happen and.
And that's been my response. It has been that I'm going to advocate that we do too. But that, that we do the virtual because we don't know. And, and then what if you would have nothing?
Absolutely.
And, and that, that kind of brought some of the tones down a little bit. When they said, well, so you're saying that then, and, and I said, well, I said, wouldn't you feel terrible if you wouldn't have anything? And I said, and, and even if it is only one or two kids that are going into the military or whatever, I said, that's kind of unfair and selfish to not think they need anything.
Yeah, I had, I had one parent tell me, well, it's, you know, why punish all the kids for one or two that can't do it? And I said, well, I can just tell you this, are you going to be the one to go tell about kids and parents that they're not going to get to participate? Because some of you are okay? I said, not going to be this guy. I said, that's not fair to make these, you know what I mean? And then tone kind of changes because, you know, I mean, it's not, yeah, somebody else got to break that bad news. But I think you're not going to, when I've talked to them, I said, this is one thing we got to realize. If we go into it and say, this is what I want, this is, this is the only thing that I'm going to do. You know, we're only going to have an in-person one. I said, everybody's going to go away unhappy because we're not going to get, we're going to have to have some middle ground. And I think if we, if we have, do the, do the virtual one, just like they proposed, I think that's, it's a great proposal. It's a great way to do it. They can have their keepsake, people can watch it that day. And then we propose to have this other one then and do it as close to a regular ceremony as we possibly can. Push it, and we don't know, we might have to push it back, might not ever be able to have it, but we could sure as heck try it.
But it'd be terrible not to have anything.
It would be terrible. I, I agree. I think to me, having a kid in the class, even if we have to push it to Christmas time, you know, Christmas break and have whoever can. I think the longer you do it, the less people are going to participate.
Right.
But like I said, you know, as far as I'm concerned, the, the joy of watching a kid go through, even some of those kids that have struggled. And, you know, you guys have finally motivated them, get them to buy into, okay, I, I do, you know? I think Chris and I had the conversation of, okay, you know, kids, well, I don't care. And he said, well, isn't there somebody in your life that would want to see you walk? And he's like, oh yeah, there is. So you finally get that kid to buy in, even if there's five kids can participate in a ceremony in December when we can have it. As far as I'm concerned, that's, you know, if we get one of those kids that we got to buy in and you can highlight them. It's in a small community like this, it's worth it.
And it's not that difficult.
And we did, just so you know, we did look at the, it's not the first available date, but the first available date is over for the July weekend. We thought we should stay away from that. So we picked the first available good date that we could, and we picked the Sunday, same time, get that kind of a thing. So it would mimic, and then if we do have to push it back, we can push it back. But that was like, what date would be the first time we could do it? And that was it, so realistically.
I think it's a great compromise and it's the best we can do.
The other thing that, that I brought up or we were just talking about was, you know, there are a lot of community members that might normally just kind of send a card or whatever. I said, but with the cell phones, I said, people's names aren't in the phone book. And I don't know if we can print out an address thing or have.
How we have to send out a.
All that other stuff first. My feeling was that when we did the video, we could have little boxes out by each one of those pictures. We could have the parade and drive-through and if they wanted to put a card in the box. You know, because.
That's a great idea.
Because you do, you open the phone book and 80% of the people aren't in there.
That's a great idea. You could, we could tell the seniors that if they want to do a box, decorate a box up or something and have it on that day and get out to the, the community. And, and, you know, that way you get this people that want to participate. You don't have a bundle of something, you don't know how to get a hold of the kid. But if they want to do whatever, when they come that day to film the video, they can decorate up a box and put it out. And you can have it like for the drive-through thing or whatever.
You know, have, have certain time that at this time, if you, if you want to, you know, acknowledge our seniors or whatever, that, that in this timeframe, because you don't want somebody to come in.
We can do it just like we do for them to drop off homework and pick it up, you know, from this time to this time, school be open.
I'm just thinking, you know, worry me, get in somebody else to watch it.
Yeah.
Well. They will get stolen.
Yeah.
Well, that's why it probably be better inside and just have, you know, like they come in and drop off homework, have them in the.
And you'd still probably need, you know.
We'd have to watch how many people are coming in. Yeah, that's not a big deal.
You know, Doug and Brenda Faber did that for their wedding anniversary, they had over 70 cars. They had a designated time, one to three. People would respond.
Yeah.
And that might, that might take a little edge off the virtual as well, if, you know, that, give that a little positive spin plus. But I do think if we can have a ceremony, and, and I'm, I'm in agreement with Steve, even if it's over Christmas break when kids, you know, because kids will be going off to college and doing different things, but.
Hopefully.
They might be so virtual at home.
They haven't decided, they're doing a registration online.
Southwest Tech told their instructors to be ready to do online. Yep, and they, like Brian does auto mechanics, second year, they're graduating. They, they had to change their schedule because they can't do pistons and, and engine rebuilds. Because if they can't get them out to a dealership to do it.
Yeah.
You know, so.
Rhiannon's going to be doing her master's and she's like, how am I supposed to meet with families online? Like she just, yeah, so it's going to be difficult for everybody.
Well, and I wouldn't be surprised in the very near future that they, our school districts, that they say, you know, be prepared.
Well, I see Governor Reivers just said he's opening certain things already tomorrow.
That's just because so many have opened already.
It's okay now.
Just don't want to drag them to jail?
No, I mean, I, I think it's sad because I think we've, we've done a pretty good job and people would just hang tough.
Well, and we even this morning, the three of us sat down and we're like, okay, Kathleen's like, so, so are we going to open in, in September? And I'm like, I can't go that way yet. But we do, realistically, we have to, I said, let's just push it off till next week. This week we have board meetings, so next week we'll truly talk about what's going to happen in the fall and what will it look like and.
I think you're going to have to develop a plan.
That's what we said.
Wuhan did, Wuhan let their kids come back and they practiced, every kid's got a mask, every, they social distance in the classroom when they can. And then there's different, I think they still do the thermal, the thermometer, temporal scans, the temperatures every day.
For example?
In Wuhan, China, they opened up now and.
Getting those elementary masks.
I know, that one, but that's, that's a whole different discipline.
Yeah.
In those schools.
Well, we were even talking about like having school every other day. Like half the kids come on Monday, Wednesday, the other kid comes on Tuesday. You're just making, you know, anyway, we just.
Throw away ideas out there.
We're a lot better off than a lot of schools, you know, because of the sizes, period. So it's, it's, we're lucky from that standpoint that there's things we can do, you know? We would have to look at, you know, lunches and some of those type of things where we concentrate people. We're a lot farther ahead of the ball than a lot, so.
Yes.
Bussing might be an interesting, so, but that's something we can, we digress, so.
With the June 30th, then that pretty much, because, you know, I, I have not seen my granddaughters or my grandchildren and it makes me very sad. But we communicate and, you know, I mean, there's already talk about when their base softball and all that's going to start. They cannot use our fields, correct?
Nope, they've told all the youth programs that they're off till the first of July and they know that. And a lot of the other, the leagues we're in are other schools, they're in the same situation. So they're right now tentatively pushed off to July 1st starting because.
And ours might even be longer because of there's going to be some.
Yeah.
Work on the field, so.
Yeah, Woodside's canceled all their tournaments, all the venues until July.
Yeah. County fairs are canceled.
So.
Do you need a motion?
Back to graduation plans, yeah, I think we need to have a formal motion.
Okay, I'd make a motion that we hold a June 30th virtual graduation followed up with a tentative date of July.
Isn't it June 7?
June 7.
Sorry.
June 7.
Sorry.
June 7, virtual.
You got that type, correcting me as I'm talking. With a follow-up date of an in-person graduation on July 12th.
If we're able.
If, yeah, if we're able.
Yeah, if allowed by.
July 12th, if able or a later date.
Are we calling an, an in-person graduation?
In-person.
Yeah.
Everybody, any more discussion on that?
Yeah, just, just so that, 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 you know, they know that we will have.
Yeah, we'll have it.
What's the July date, July?
July 12th.
Or when we can, I think it has to be.
I just, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Blazinski, second by Mr. Brisboys. Let's do a roll call.
Oh, okay. Mr. Brisboy, Mrs. Ferriant, Mr. Lewis, Mr. Manning, Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Mrs. Blazinski.
Yes. And so then as far as like having that drop-off like for our, our seniors, is that you're going to turn that over to the senior advisors or?
I think that makes sense. I think the seniors need to take ownership of that. It gives them something to do.
They can do the boxes and get them here.
Set it up.
And then you guys can help them set up a day or time and they can do that.
That's.
Probably after the June 7th because they could bring them then, June 7th and then pick a day when they, probably an evening, right? So people could, most likely a Sunday or.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. And I mean, we could even do it if they wanted to, they could, they could make it a drive-through. If the kids wanted to stand out and, I was, I keep pointing back here because I'm thinking it's.
Yeah.
Drive in by the buses and you got 30 kids six feet apart, if you have something to give them, you, you throw it out as you drive by.
So make your box with a big top, because if it doesn't go in, you can't keep it.
There you go. And then they get to see it anyway, there's lots of different possibilities.
And so they can have a little bit of.
Right, ownership.
And figure out what they want, you guys can relay back what.
And rent it is and.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. So any more discussion on that? We're good. 10-3, then discussion possible action on increasing base percentage for extracurricular pay from $35,947. That's what it is now, that's what we base our percentages off of. And that hasn't been addressed for quite some time, to move the base percentages to $40,000. And that would increase, the overall increase on that would, just by doing that, would increase the overall coaching extracurricular base by $8,914.69, right?
Based on this year's projections.
But, but the one thing that we did talk about, if you did look at the printout, is the inequity in the middle school coaching in the different. And so Steve, did you want to, what would you recommend?
Yeah, and so this isn't on here, so we would have to bring this back another time to move those up because it's just the base.
Okay, okay.
And I see Mr. Tony couldn't get through on there. He had some questions and comments that he wanted to have, and so we can bring that back to the next one. But here's, here's what we did discuss. So like the head, head football coach and basketball coach, boys and girls, make $2,875. The rest of the head coaches make $2,156. So we were going to move those all to the same. So all head coaches get paid the same.
High school?
All high school coaches get paid the same.
Good clarification.
Well, high school, yeah.
And then middle school, right now a middle school football coach gets paid $13.30. The middle school track and most everybody else get paid $8, 98, 60, right?
Yep.
Except middle school volleyball.
Which only gets $7.30.
Only gets $7.30. So our proposal is to move them all to, let me see, $1,100.
Which would be 2.75% of the base.
It's, that's, that's a chance to finance.
So that would be a different one, bring this all back, but our, our idea is to get all the head coaches at one pay. You know, one pay for high school, one pay for middle school and all the assistants.
For high school.
For high school and middle school to one. So everybody's paying the same. Now the seasons are a little bit, but most of them are like only a week or so difference, so. And we know coaches don't just work things out.
That was my question is, there will be some pushback, but it's only.
It's not much and.
I mean, pretty much everybody's getting a raise, so.
Yeah, and they're all shit back.
Most everybody's getting a raise.
So we can bring that to the next one, but that's, this kind of what the proposal is, we'll have it on the next one to, a week later, I don't quite a bit with the numbers.
One of the seasons was 13, 14 weeks and the other two seasons were 12 to 13 weeks, so they're pretty close.
So, okay, so right now the discussion would be to increase the base, which they're projected off of, to, from $35,947 to $40,000.
Which hasn't been changed in at least five years, do you say? At least five, maybe more.
So, and that would have an overall ramifications of $8,914.69. Now that's not including moving the other people's up. That, that would be an additional expense if we move the other coaches up to give everybody equity. So the vote right now is just to move the base that we worked the percentages off of, so.
I would make that motion.
It's been moved by Mrs. Peterson to raise the base for extracurricular pay to $40,000. Second by Mrs. Blazinski, any discussion? No, roll call.
Mrs. Ferriant, Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Manning.
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Mrs. Blazinski.
Yes.
Mr. Brisboy.
Yes.
Okay, then 10-4, discussion possible action on accepting donation from PTSO to the playground for $3,000. So we should do that one first, right? And then the Simpson's one's next.
Yeah, I put them in more in motion, but.
That's okay. We can, we'll do them separate, just to keep it clean. So PTSO for $3,000 for the playground, any discussion on that?
A move to approve.
We moved with Mr. Brisboys to approve or accept the donation of $3,000, is there a second? Second by Mrs. Ferriant, roll call please.
Mrs. Ferriant.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Manning.
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Mrs. Blazinski.
Yes.
Mr. Brisboy.
Yes.
We seconded.
Yes. Okay, then discussion possible action on accepting donation from Simpson Ford tractor for the lift that we're using for the power washing to the school at a cost of $1,200, in excess of $1,200.
Correct, because they loaned it to us for the week and now we've extended it a little bit, but I don't, I don't know what the additional time is, so we very much thank them.
Been moved by Mr. Manning to accept that, is there a second? By Mrs. Ferriant's, roll call please.
I'll read those. Mrs. Ferriant.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Manning.
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Mrs. Blazinski.
Yes.
Mr. Brisboy.
Yes.
And who made those motions again, I'm sorry.
Randy made the first and Mrs. Ferriant made the second. And we thank Simpsons very much. If you see them, thank them. And the PTSO.
Yeah, this is like the, I think, fifth year PTSO's donated $3,000, so.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
10-5, then discussion possible action on increasing bus route pay 3% and hourly pay to 1345 and offering life insurance as part of bus fare replacement package.
So we did a costing, did everybody get a copy of that too? It's all, I'm sorry, I'm so used to us having that on there and doing that right now, so I'm going to make a copy quick. We talked about this in finance and we did discuss whether, you know, we want to be similar to other districts. So we're, we're pretty darn close when it comes to the rate of route pay. We're a little low when it came to actual hourly pay. So then Cheryl did a costing on the app, so. So they were making $31.90 a, a route. And we were proposing that we give them a 3% raise to $32.86. And then their hourly rate of pay, that's the very bottom line, extracurricular hourly is $12.78 now. And we discussed moving it to $13.45 an hour. That is a 5.24. And we discussed moving it to $13.45 an hour. That is a 5.24% increase, but it brought them in line with others.
Yeah, it brought us kind of, just above the bottom.
Oh, I thought, I thought that was a middle ground. No?
No.
A little bit above the bottom.
Well, if you count two from the bottom, it'd be a middle ground. We can say that. It's in the middle. Yeah, so it's not, it gets us into the rest of the schools around us.
And so she did a, Cheryl, of course, did her, did all the work. And so it's gonna cost us $2,000 for the, for the route pay. And their wages would go up by that much. You can't really figure out extracurricular because it changes with, with snow and seasons and all that kind of stuff. But the one thing I did bring up and it, and it's a minimal cost, but it would be a benefit that the bus drivers do not currently have, is to give them the opportunity to get life insurance from the district. I just had to cross that out. It would be $175 if they all wanted it annually.
They would, no, they'd automatically be covered.
They don't, sorry.
Yeah, they, they don't have an option if we, one group goes in.
The whole group goes in. Thank you for.
But they don't, yeah, it's all, it's all a benefit. There's no deduction.
And it's just, again, something really small that we can do to add to them being part of the Ethica family.
And I did check with the insurance company, make sure the language on the plan was okay to do that and whether rates would go up. And they said no.
Any questions, comments?
As presented.
It's been moved by Mr. Brisboys to approve the increases in bus driver pay and benefits as presented. Second by Mr. Manning. Is that okay, the wording that he used?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Brisboys is the first. Mr. Manning was the second. Okay, we're good. Roll call, please.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Manning.
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Mrs. Blazinski.
Yes.
Mr. Brisboy.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferriant.
Yes.
Okay, then. 10-6, discussion possible action on creating position to learn bookkeeping and front office duties.
So I brought this up. Cheryl and I have been looking at, and I talked with Kathleen and Chris about what, what we do need. So we did have an assistant bookkeeper. Our HR person is currently doing some of those duties. We also do need, so, but we want her to do HR. So there's still a gap in what Cheryl had for help and what Brooke is doing. She's being cross-trained, of course. There's also a need for us to do some cross-training with the front office. I'd like to make sure that another person can sub in there and answer the phones and do things. Part of it is because both of those ladies are thinking about retirement. I'm not gonna say they gave me a date or anything, but they have, they've mentioned it, which is, you know, I mentioned it too.
I mentioned it too. Okay, so now I'm gonna say that. She opened it up. If I don't get help, I may be going sooner than later.
Cheryl, we don't approve.
And additionally, we always seem to need help during lunch. With paraprofessional duties, there's lunch duty, inside, outside. You can never have enough people, you know, walking around outside watching kids and walking inside and walking up to and from everything. So I do feel that if this was a full-time position, if we cross-train them, eventually somebody's gonna retire or, and that person would actually have to, could potentially take over, but they would know how to move forward then and could, and again, I think it would be, it would be really good for our office to have that person that that can fill in a couple spots. Working about three hours in our office, three hours in, in the other office, and then an hour and a half lunch duty or however that would pan out, kind of like a paraprofessional.
So Julie had talked to me about this and I told her I'd like to see them create a, you know, what the job description and the duties that they wanted and kind of what the hours might be that they might do. And then potentially what we think for, you know, wages would be. And then I, I say, because it's, it's, you know, to post it or do anything, we kind of need to have, this is what you're gonna do so we can, we can, you know, get the proper people to apply. And so I don't know if they want it in policy or where the best place to do that is or.
Yeah, we were gonna run it through policy after they had kind of worked out a list, so.
Sure.
And I, and we did, you know, there is a district bookkeeper payroll clerk job description. So, you know, we would base it on that and then add other duties from the front office again to get that cross-training in. So it's not in its own job description. It's really pretty much picking up a lot of these. But we would tweak it because I wanted to make sure that.
It's a new position, so you can do whatever you want to put in there, what you.
Yep.
I would, I would put, it was me, I would put on the top the priority ones, you know, these are the ones, your main things we're looking for. And then these are the other things that would be occasional.
Duties to be assigned on every contract.
But, you know, at least the, the top ones, when a person's applying for that job, we're looking at it.
They know.
They know that these are the priorities. These down here, you don't necessarily have to have experience in, but you will be trained in these things. But, you know, these up here, you, you have to, you know.
But it's really, it's become very evident in, in the shutdown that, you know, Cheryl knows how to do lots and lots of stuff. I don't know what Cheryl does day-to-day. I don't know all the reports she does.
I just do my nails. I just make it look like I'm busy.
The front office has duties that just they know how to do. And they don't always know how to do each other's duties because they're so segregated. Everybody does, you know, we all say everybody does everything, but Mary Jo does know how to do certain things that nobody else knows. And so does Barb. So we can't, we can't, we gotta break some of those silos down because, you know, we just do. We, I know how to teach high school math now, so.
I'm not going there.
You, everybody, and that's just it. Ethica, we do what we need to do to get the job done. It's just that I'm, I'm kind of concerned that if something happens that we get somebody mad. It's the same thing when we talk about when open enrollment, if we get one family man at us or one teacher is very much disliked, then we'll lose things and make it less familial. And I don't wanna, I don't want that to happen, so.
It just protects the district too. If somebody is, you know, has, you know, has health issues and they're gone and we don't know how to do that. We, it's the bus test. They always tell me, if somebody gets hit by the bus, can you carry on, you know? And so I think this spreads that risk out. So you guys will take that and present that. And then hopefully you guys have a policy and whatever, then we probably need to bounce that, talk about it.
In finance.
Finance and personnel too, just.
Yeah, we have a meeting before the next one anyway, so we can.
So we can hit it and then we can bounce it off.
All right, okay. So bring it back to the board next month.
Yep. Okay. Any other discussions on that? Okay, if not. 10-7, then discussion possible action on football field, baseball field. So what this is, is everybody knows when they pre-did the football field years ago, they've got that big ditch that runs up through the middle of the baseball field now to drain it. And we've, we've talked about potentially filling that in sometime to make it less intrusive on the baseball field, but still work on the football field. Well, Olson's want to start this parking lot project up here, and we've got to do something with that dirt. So it's a perfect time just to take the dirt from there and put it down there where we need it. Coach Clary has shot all the grades, so he knows where it has to be so that way we don't create a problem and we have ponding water for the football or the baseball field. And then there's six sprinkler heads that would need to be, you know, brought back up because it's 20 or 24 inches is how deep that dip is in the middle of the baseball field. So to bring that up, it comes to about the 15-yard line on the football field is, you know, where the center field goes through. So they would fill that in, taper that down, so then that way when football runs, they don't run into a hump. And, and it properly drains because, you know, neither of them want water sitting on the baseball or the football field. So they would do all that, put that all in. Randy Olson has talked to the company that does and Frank to raise those things up. And so any costs that would incur, the baseball club is, is willing to do that to raise those up and there'd be minimal cost. Because the cost, the big cost we're gonna be was the dirt. Because Coach Clary had calculated how much dirt they needed to bring in. Well, we've got to get rid of this dirt and put it there. And so they'll do all the work and do everything. We're just gonna knock a hole in the fence so they can go out on the field. And one bright spot is, is we don't, the worry before was is with all the kids on the field in the summer and then football's starting in August, how do you get that down while they're potentially gonna start this project in a week? So we could get it on there and get the dirt on there, get it seeded, get it, you know, get straw put down so it'll grow. And then the sprinklers, we can just, and it'll be done.
Silver lining.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, we're never gonna get a better chance.
But it will make the, because we, the way the field is now, I mean, I've never seen a baseball field with a trench in the middle of it. And we will not get, I mean, other coaches vote not to give us home field advantage because they do, they don't want to play in the run through that dip. So, and, and there's actually, if you go out there, the outfield and the baseball field in general is extremely rough from the projects we've had and the dirt coming down off the hill and that. So it'd be a time to get it. Kill two birds with one stone. Anymore? Any discussion questions? I would assume there might be a little pushback from some of the football people on it. But I guess it was, you know, we, and somebody mentioned too that it's, the way it is now, it's probably not handicap accessible going around on that side the way it is now. But the intentions are to not, you know, we're not just gonna take that dirt, dump it, and then have a hump in the football field and not have a drain. It still will drain. It's just gonna be less of a dip on the football field, on the baseball end. So again, the two commingled fields are, will be workable for both.
It was a cow pasture years ago and it was all right. It'll be okay.
Yep, yeah.
Five more years anyway, it'll sell.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you need a motion on this?
We just wanted to make sure the whole board was aware of what's going on.
Everybody good? Anybody want a motion? We're good? Okay, all right. 10-8, then discussion possible action on return of paraprofessionals.
Ms. Diane Clemens has submitted her retirement paper. She had appreciated the employment that the Ethica School District has afforded her. And I would especially like to thank all of you for voting to pay the hourly employees during the school statewide shutdown.
Need a motion to accept her retirement with many thanks and gratitude.
I'll make that motion.
By Mrs. Peterson. Is there a second?
One second.
Mrs. Ferriant, all in favor, signal if you're saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? We thank her for all her service. 10-9, then discussion possible action on non-referendum borrowing. Do we need to, is this all one? Or where these commas are, do we need to break this? Is there?
They're just different, no.
Okay.
They're, they're just different documentation.
Okay, so we can do it all in one. Okay, so discussion possible action on non-referendum borrowing expansion remainder?
Expensing.
Expense, sorry, remainder. Can that just, do we need to read that link?
No, no, that's just the.
Information.
It's the information on what we can do with those funds.
Okay.
And what we can't do.
So, and then that, this is what they would be for the wireless access points, right? The RFID's, outside cameras, more elementary tech. We will have proposals coming.
Yeah, we'll bring individual things.
We just need to say that we're gonna use it for that.
Yes, so it's geared toward the tech part of the rest of the borrowing that we took. And we don't necessarily have to spend all of it on that, but we'd like to be able to use it for this, these things.
Which we probably will spend it on that.
I'm just saying.
So, it's been moved by Mr. Manning to, to do that.
Second.
Second by Mr. Brisboys. Probably need a roll call on that.
Mr. Manning.
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Mrs. Blazinski.
Yes.
Mr. Brisboy.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferriant.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes. Okay, then. 10-10, discussion possible action on setting committee dates. So. So then the proposal is the next Finance and Personnel Committee would be June 8th, which would be before our next board meeting. You guys good with that?
And that has the time down at 6:00.
Do you think we need, I mean.
Oh, yeah. We need to talk about budget.
That's right.
Because we have to approve a budget next month.
Yep, so do we need to have, we need to have a Finance Committee meeting before that?
That's up to you.
What are you comfortable with? Do you, would you rather have us instead of doing it at that, that meeting? You think there's gonna be, it'd be pretty cut and dry, won't it?
Yeah.
So we can address it then and then recommend it then. Okay. Okay, so the proposal is Finance at 6:00.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. It's been moved by Mrs. Peterson, second by Mrs. Blazinski. All in favor of setting the next Finance Committee meeting at June 8th at 6:00 PM? Signal if you're saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. 10-2, then, policy on Wednesday, June 3rd at 5:00.
I guess I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Yeah, you're on note too.
Okay, moved and seconded. Move, Mrs. Blazinski, seconded by Mrs. Ferriant. Set the Policy Committee Wednesday, June 3rd at 5:00 PM. All in favor, signal if you're saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, it's set for that date then. 10-10, 3, then Buildings and Grounds, Wednesday, June 3rd at 6:30.
So.
I think we discussed that, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. Moved by Mr. Brisboys, seconded by Mr. Manning. All in favor, signal if you're saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. That is set for them. Okay, then.
So nothing's down there, but when do you think curriculum needs to meet?
I don't think this.
Not till July?
No, teachers are working on curriculum work, so.
So you guys can get together and on our next meeting have a date proposed. Okay.
I do have two things. Graduation, you mentioned, and since this is May, and the next time is after graduation, usually we have a board member that does something.
Yeah.
Nobody said, hey, I'll be up there doing whatever for your.
We might not be able to have that many people.
So one of you guys is gonna hand diplomas?
Probably.
Okay.
That just popped in my head and I heard, oh, it's after.
For the video. I mean, if the parents, usually the board members of the parents, the parents, the seniors, if you guys want to be there for your child, I'm.
I wouldn't want to be there just for my child, you know.
You want to do it for all of them?
Yeah, and I don't think you can do that. You know what I mean? I, I don't personally think that that.
Well, how many kids are you gonna have? Five kids, two senior advisors.
Right. Then Chris is calling off names if we do it that way.
And Adam will be recording.
And Adam might be, well, we'd probably set that up as a standard. But the, the board member would have to be there for the five minutes if those five kids walk in. And then we'd have another hour break. And then they'd have to come back for.
Doing it just for my child, I don't think that's fair.
But that's the only one that you could actually hug.
She might not want me to hug her. Did you say hug or slug?
Wait, should I get like this?
We could probably make a lot of money. So I, I think it's better just to do everything the same and you guys hand them out. I mean, if you get where you think you want somebody, I mean.
Okay.
I'd be willing.
We were kind of thinking about them just walking over the empty stage and picking up a their thing and then turning and looking at the camera and.
Picking up their diploma?
Yeah.
So have you thought about like a silk flower, whatever their flower is?
Yeah, we're gonna be doing all of that. They'll have, they'll have the same equipment that they would have, you know, their gowns and their pins and their stools and their, all that. They could decorate.
Honor cords.
Yeah, all that stuff. They're gonna have all that same stuff, so.
Yeah, so, okay. Anything else?
Well, they have, I think, did you mention the summer ban, Mary Benz?
Yeah, but that's not until later, so I can mention that in close.
Okay, we're good, we're good. All right, then. 11, adjourn to closed session under Wisconsin Statute 19.851(c) for consideration employment, promotion, compensation, and performance evaluation of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercise responsibility. In closed session, we'll be discussing, discussion regarding performance evaluation of district employees, teaching staff administration, and our coaching staff. It will be in closed session, not less than five minutes, but it, and it probably will be more. Yeah, so.
I just wanted to make one comment in closed.
Because we got a vote to close and then I think when we go down to the other room like we have been.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
I saw.
Yeah, so, Mrs. Blazinski moved and is moving. Second, Mr. Manning. All in favor, we gotta do a roll call, right?
Yeah. Yeah, uh, Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
Mrs. Blazinski?
Yes.
Mr. Briswold?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferriens? Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
So audience will be back in six, a few minutes, we don't know when exactly, we'll leave the Zoom going.
We were actually.
We don't need to take anything with us, do we? Uh, I'll take mine because most of them are back from. Okay, I will just grab. I've got a piece of screen, so I can remember.
He's in the water, he's hotel.
I didn't, I didn't know Mrs. Row was going to be here today. I never signed that.
All right, have a good night.
And you're all ready to stay up for the show. All right. I'm just going to tuck my letter from Diane in my, in the folder of all your other stuff.
Okay.
And actually I'll carry that because it looks like my pouch is smaller than hers this time. I think my pouch is always.
These are small compared to what they normally are.
Yeah, usually you have a big old box. It did change. See, now you have days on here and I didn't have days. So 12.2.4, discussion of possible action on summer contracts, five days is written there. I didn't write the days on there.
I might have grabbed them from last year's.
You might have, because I didn't have these, I just had their names down. And then, um, I have a funny feeling what happened for some of this must, I had, um, for my 12.3, I had discussion of possible action on approving long-term subs. And you had, and I changed it already, um, approving maternity leave. And I knew that, the board doesn't do that, they had to approve the subs. So I don't know if I had more than one copy of this? Because you, you rarely make a copy of anything, you would have done it like Thursday or something.
I made a copy of it before you finalized it, which is probably what the issue was.
Okay, there you go, because you were on Friday.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I started it, I think on Thursday after I saw you send out the agenda, but you weren't.
It wasn't final. I sent it to the board to ask if they had everything.
Yeah.
And then I printed it on Friday, you are correct. All right, so that's, that makes my brain feel better because I was like, uh, I don't know why this is still like this.
So do we have it right now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, because I did, I caught, like I said, discuss 12.3 is possible action on approving long-term subs. And I had it written the other way and I got to thinking, because Kathleen was asking me, she's like, so I have their, you have to approve their leave, and I said, I approve the leave because really we can't deny it anyway.
Right.
But that's not a board thing, but we should approve the new.
The hiring. So like, there we go. Be a roll call, calmly?
Probably.
I can't type worth a darn tonight.
That's all right, I've had really weird eyes today. Like I keep asking, like my eyes are watering weird and I feel like there's something in one and.
Oh, how did we get Mrs. Row on?
I don't know.
These all have yeses on them.
Did we copy?
Did I copy and paste them, I'm wondering? Probably from last year, so that I didn't have to.
That's all right, I'll just delete Mrs. Row from some of these. I've been trying to do that now.
Yeah, you've been.
I haven't been very typey tonight, so, sorry.
Oh, that's okay. But we need to put roll call on, which I started just to finish. So I emailed the auditors today because I've heard rumor that they don't know for sure how they're doing audits, whether they're gonna do them remotely, whether they're gonna, whatever. And we haven't had our date yet anyway. And she said that they have been doing scheduling meetings or something like that and they're not quite sure how it's gonna look. So I told her either the last week of July or early August. I didn't want at the end of August. One, two years in a row, I think we ended up having it the same time the teachers came back, which was absolutely.
Oh, now that'd be nuts. Um, can you look at 10.5? And so they looped everything in altogether.
Extra curricular pay.
I don't know. Maybe that was your fingers. 23190, maybe you were trying to get that done.
I thought it was in there, but it's not. Wow.
And again, I might have clicked on something too.
It's 32 something.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. It is 3286. And hourly pay to 1345, yep. An hour. And then I put and giving life insurance as presented.
Yep.
Okay, I wanted to make sure we got that in giving life insurance. Okay. I'm glad we're having such a nice discussion about extracurricular pay. Because that hasn't been addressed in a while now. And I'm understanding, again, I'm learning. I'm a new person, superintendent, yet I'm still learning. It takes time. Everything takes.
Oh, my goodness. I've been at this how many years and I'm still learning. You don't know what you don't know.
Yeah. The funniest part is now Frank is quoting me. He says, that is a very smart person once said.
Well, and we're finishing each other's sentences. You're walking away. I knew exactly what you were gonna say. Kind of like being married to someone for how many years, you just kind of finish each other's sentences or you don't even have to finish them because they know what you're, you know.
Yeah.
My kids used to get so mad at us. It's like, why don't you guys ever finish a sentence? It's like, because the other one already knows where I was going with this.
All right, I'm up at 10.3 and I have a motion made by Mr., seconded by Mrs. YLO. C Z Y M S K I. So to increase base pay. I don't know who that was. Just put somebody in there. We would never do that since we're being taped on Zoom now.
Are we?
Still on.
I don't know. We can ask them.
I actually think it was Mr. Brisboy.
Brisboy. That's what I was thinking too.
Do you want yeses after 10?
I'll go through and put them in. You mean after the roll call thing?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll go in and put them in tomorrow. All right, that's normally what I go back and do.
All right.
I don't have time.
It's one thing that we could do. I don't know what they're talking about, so.
Yeah. Everybody else go home.
Yeah, Kathleen and Chris do. Once they're done and closed. My eyes are getting buggy.
What?
My eyes are getting buggy. Like I can't read. You know, I could make it bigger. I can't.
Well, and we could change the color. I just do it so that we kind of keep track of where we're at. Actually, I think you were the one that started that color.
Well, I like because it stands out. I don't, I'm officially, I don't care, but
Yeah.
when you, when you're like, oh, am I in the minutes or am I, you know, poof, it's nice to be able to see.
Yes, exactly.
And then when they're officially done, we can make them all black. I don't care, but it's just like, it pops much better when you're in the midst of everything.
Yeah.
Kathleen's doing something. I can't quite tell. I got like 20 emails from her.
So Mackenzie's done with her master's program.
Good for her.
It's been submitted and it's been graded. She's just gotta get her transcript now and. And then with this degree. Because she did the portfolio part of it, she can be licensed as alternative education.
Really? She doesn't want that though.
No, but she said, you know, it was, if I did the portfolio, I could be licensed as this, but.
Yeah, I mean, that would be neat if she wanted to teach high schoolers during the summer or something, but.
Yeah, well, and that might not be it, but it was more like at risk. I mean, all her papers and stuff had to do with like shadow children. And at risk, I mean, there was, yeah, there was all these different categories of kids that kind of get missed through the loopholes. They don't qualify for special ed, but they have definite needs. And that's what it is. It might not be alternative ed. It might be called something. So who made the motions to reconvene?
We haven't done it yet. Okay, we're all, okay, so a motion to reconvene to open session by Mr. Brisboys. This is their second.
Sure.
Second by Mr. Manning. All in favor, single tap is an aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're back in open session. So then 12.1 discussion possible action on teaching contracts.
We're to offer contracts to the chief and staff.
That's, that's good. That suffices it. Okay, is there a second? Second by Mr. Manning, roll call.
Oh, I didn't do that.
Do we need roll call? I would think so. Money, money, right?
Mr. Brisboy.
Yes.
Yeah, Ferriens, Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Manning.
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Mrs. Blazinski.
Yes.
Okay, then 12.2 discussion possible action on extending teacher contracts. We need to do these separately.
Yes, can you start with Mr. Fabro, please?
It's not in order. Yeah, that's fine. Mr. Fabro's summer contract.
15 days.
15 days at, at regular. Okay, per diem. Okay, is there a motion to extend Mr. Fabro's?
I'll make that motion.
And Mrs. Blazinski, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Brisboys, roll call.
Mr. Brisboy.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferriens.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Manning.
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Mrs. Blazinski.
Yes.
Who would you like next?
Mrs. Behrens.
Mrs. Behrens, the motion to extend Mrs. Behrens' contract.
She has 20 days for lessons that might have to be in July and might have to be in August and might not be able to be if.
20 days permitting.
Permitting.
Permitting, yeah. A motion by Mr. Manning, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mrs. Peterson, all in favor, single tap is, oh, I'm sorry, roll call.
Mrs. Ferriens.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Manning.
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Mrs. Blazinski.
Yes.
Mr. Brisboy.
Okay, that's Mrs. Man, who would you like next? Mrs. Bevan.
20.
Miss Bevan's. 20 days for Mr. Bevan's.
Yep.
Per diem.
Yep.
Right, okay, motion for that.
So.
By Mr. Brisboys, is there a second? By Mrs. Ferriens, roll call please.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Manning.
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Mrs. Blazinski.
Yes.
Mr. Brisboy.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferriens.
Okay, Mrs. Sprecher now, right?
Mrs. Sprecher would typically have five days.
Five days, do we want to do five?
That's up to you guys. I don't, she, she gets paid for shopping.
Okay.
So typically she would get five days to go shopping once a week. She wasn't here for nine weeks because she didn't shop for nine weeks. So to give her extra money for that doesn't quite mesh up for me, so I would recommend doing 75% of the five days.
So four days?
I think four days is reasonable.
Isn't that what we kind of talked about?
75% is what you're saying, right?
Yeah, so.
I'd make that motion.
Four days, okay. Is there a second?
Second.
By Mr. Brisboys, roll call.
Mr. Manning.
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Mrs. Blazinski.
Yes.
Mr. Brisboy.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferriens.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes. Okay, 12.3 discussion possible action on approving long-term substitutes for maternity leave.
Bailey Rule and Lauren Young.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve those two long-term substitutes? By Mr. Manning, is there a second?
A second.
And Mrs. Ferriens, do we need a roll call on that?
It's money.
Might as well.
I have it down.
Mrs. Peterson. Mrs. Blazinski.
Yes.
Mr. Brisboy.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferriens.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Manning's not on here.
Motion to adjourn then.
So moved.
And Mrs. Blazinski, is there a second? By Mr. Manning, all in favor, single tap is an aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, everyone.